The August fourth, two thousand twenty-five Borough Council meeting will now be called aboard. Please stand for the flag of the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
The deceased residents for the month of July, two thousand twenty-five. Paul Trillo, Jennifer Lynch, one of our Public Works employees, Richard Lynch's mother, Joseph Guy, Benny Wilson, Robert Cook, Carl Nelson, Linda Kelly, Christine Duncan.
Ms. Fullview?
Present.
Mrs. Heller?
Present.
Mr. Duplikie?
Here.
Mr. Sewicki? Or Ms. Sewicki, sorry.
President.
Sorry, Dennis. Mr. Pappas?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Present.
Mayor Leslie?
Here.
Mr. Wills?
Here.
Mr. Catania?
Here.
Mr. Wilbert's here. Mrs. Boyle is absent. Chief Montella?
Here.
Chief Havik?
Here.
Row call complete. Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. In the audience, we have Brandon Venice?
Here.
Okay, could you respond up here? We have, Madam Mayor is going to read an Eagle Scout recognition.
Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution two thousand twenty-five. A resolution of Brookhaven Borough Council, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, honoring Brandon Venice for earning the Boy Scouts of America Eagle Scout Award. Whereas Brandon Venice is the son of Christopher and Faith Venice, four seventeen, Catalac Drive, Brookhaven, PA. And whereas Brandon Venice, Brookhaven Troop, four ninety-three, had earned this Eagle Scout Award, which was the highest award given to a youth member of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Brandon Venice, Eagle Scout Project included creating a stone base for a shed and assembling the shed with his troop to be utilized for poles and supplies at the Halle Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary. And whereas Brandon Venice obtained all his required Eagle Scout merit badges, now therefore be resolved that Brookhaven Borough Council, along with his parents, Christopher and Faith Venice, and other family and friends hereby congratulate and honor Brandon Venice for earning the Eagle Scout Award and extend best wishes to him in his future endeavors. Resolved this fourth day of August, two thousand twenty-five, signed by Brookhaven Borough Council, Vice President George Pappas, and John Wilbert, our Borough Secretary. Good luck.
Peter Missiris, Marshall Rep. Now, if I could address this to the fire.
Marshall, is that you?
Yep.
I know it's a small item, but oftentimes in our shopping centers, people are parked parallel to the shops. And there are signs, but I think the signs are probably facing the wrong way because they're facing out. The people are parking parallel. If the sign say no parking would be facing the driver, it may have a small effect on their behavior. So that's my suggestion, just to reorient the signs.
The other thing was, I came two months ago and I said something about a school bus violation.
Well, I still have not heard about my hearing date, so I don't know how long it takes, but the law says you're supposed to be granted a hearing and timely now. So I don't know what timely means. I think four months should be timed. And Mr. Wilson, has Pendelco initiated the school bus safety program yet? Do you know?
I believe it will be implemented sometime during the school year, upcoming school year. So I would expect sometime after Labor Day. Is that correct, Chief? Have you had any timelines?
Right now, the district is looking to have this program open running for the first day of school. There's still some, we're working on getting implementation within the police departments that serve the district, but right now the July date will be the first day of school. So they're planning on pushing out some communications through PR channels this month to get that.
And we see many districts in Delaware County and throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania implementing a similar, if not identical, bus safety program.
Yeah, I saw on channel, I don't know, channel ten or three, Lower Marine still. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, my neck.
Yes, absolutely.
The signs are put up on the buildings, they're put up there according code. There's also painting in the streets. Okay, our PMSO officers, along with myself and the Brookhaven Police do police that area and write tickets. I just recently said, what shopping center is your home from back there?
I have like Giant that's parked in front of the state school, that's my liquor store.
I'm working with the other math shopping centers to park those signs down to the end of the LA Fitness, but we do patrol that, we do write your tickets. It's just, it's an everyday, twenty-four hour day thing. Okay, people are rude, they're angry, they don't care. Okay, they're undesirables, you know what I mean? People who don't care, so that's where we're at with that. But we do police that, those shopping centers.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hutt, and I live on West Brookhaven Road. I wanted to bring up to the council to see what we could do or what would need to happen to bring back the Brookhaven basketball for the use of this area.
I can address that. So last year, we had an individual that was willing to bring back the program. Last year, it also fell under the rec board for insurance purposes until that individual was able to get together a team and a board. So there are specific guidelines. So if it's something that you're very interested in doing as the commissioner of that league, I recommend that you talk with Tom Dykes, who is also the president of rec board, who is in the audience tonight, to actually get that information up and running. But if you're planning on doing it this year, you're going to have to act very quickly. And the problems that we've had in the past is with coaches, with having people that are going to be committed and to volunteer to have that happen. When we implemented it the last year, they only concentrated on specific age groups, and it was mostly with team building, the basic knowledge of the game, the basic fundamentals of everything. So we welcome it. We just haven't had the volunteer that we would like to have to get it up and running, but we're not opposed to it at all.
Okay.
Okay? Yep, absolutely. And good luck with that, we're here for you.
Evening, Mr. Fire Marshall.
Good evening, council. Good evening, residents. Charles Leslie, seven oh three Cambridge Road. I'm just here to bring it up again one more time, that the power outage on Cambridge Road and Marshall and Cooper, Argyle, Hillside, it's an ongoing issue. I know I've addressed it numerous times, other residents have addressed it, and I don't know where we can, what we can do with this. I mean, we have to get that secondary line brought in there somehow. I'm going to go see if the council's willing to, I'm willing to take the bull by the horns and go talk to Riggs Distler and see if they couldn't put the poles up at a minimal cost if the borough would buy them. I spoke to somebody, we're looking at maybe four poles to bring a line in from Edgemine Avenue to grab one to the rear of the four hundred block of Cambridge Road to backfeed us so we get power. It's out all the time.
All the time.
All the time. It's stupid.
Mr. Catania, I believe met with PICO this past week.
You did?
I did.
Oh, cool. You going to report on it?
You want me to?
Please. Thank you. Just to bring it to everybody's attention again.
It's been on the radar for a little bit. We met with them someday last week with their government relations person and two of their engineers. The first part of the answer was that they have a vegetation management project going on right now. They track the outages and say there was two dozen outages in the last year, whatever it may have been. They track that to trees. So they have an active project right now that'll be done in probably the next few months to remove any of those trees that have been identified as creating the outages. The second part was exactly what you said, is bringing in a secondary line. There's only one feed for a whole section of the borough. A little more complicated than that.
I understand.
Problem they have, and granted, like one twenty, one twenty-one, you see that now. Apparently, that portion of the borough is on a four KV system that, trust me, I'm just, remember when I said I may be wrong, but it's a four KV system, generally it's a thirty-four KV system. They can't take power from this sector of the borough and bring it over into that sector of the borough because they don't mingle with each other very well.
Gotcha.
So the PICO does have a project to upgrade their entire system to one unified voltage, whatever it may be, and that's a long-term project.
Okay.
So for right now, trimming trees and.
Is that Mrs. Garrity and Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Okay, we're going to close the first public discussion. Fire Chief Rob Montella. Good evening, Chief. Chief, before your report, you want to talk about the violations, parking violations?
Yeah.
How active you are?
Yeah, we write tickets there daily, a lot of them. The police chief can verify that. I mean, they challenge them to the border, usually win those sometimes, so, but we're doing the best we can. It's never, I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent. People are just disrespectful and blocking handicap ramps, people with wheelchairs can get these buildings, so we're getting, we're doing the best we can. We feel the same way you do. You know, we actually write tickets in the fire truck when we pull up sometimes, and we get in the fire truck where it gets, so we're on it, we feel your pain, so we're doing the best we can.
So with that, meaning council and residents, tonight I brought Chief Rigby from Middletown Township Fire Department, who's the chief of Middletown Fire Company in Rocky Run. He's the ALS provider that we're trying to get the chase car service with and get a contract signed with them. Council, you know you got to update a contract from Riddle last Friday, right?
Yes.
Look better, right? It's not really what the residents want to pay for, and you know, we want to put a good service out on the street. We've been partnering with Chief Rigby's companies for years now, and our relationship is better and better every year. And he's here, if you guys have any questions, you guys know the basic outlook I gave you for the car, the upfront cost. Chief Rigby's here to give you a little update of where, when we're going to be in service, and I did assure you that we had gap coverage till we get in service, our alarm cards will follow the next two units, which right now technically is Aston, which was where our old unit was anyway, and Middletown's unit, when we get up with them, will be the same distance right from Middletown's Fire Company. So Chief Rigby, if you could come up, if they have any, you know, if guys have any questions, now's the time to ask them. If the public has any questions, he's just going to give you an update on where we're at with the chase car. So Chief, got it.
Welcome, Chief.
Hello.
Counsel?
See you. Thank you for being, let me be here tonight to speak to you folks. I have been working with your executive committee a little bit, actually with the other boroughs as well, when we were starting out. Today, I'm here to represent Rocky Run EMS. I am the public safety director for the township of Middletown, which kind of oversight on both companies as well as the EMS. We are making the move to the ALS to upgrade our care. Currently, we are going through renewing our process. We had ALS, we had an ALS license years before, so now we need to go through that. We're moving along pretty good. We have the DEA, we just completed all our paperwork with them. That's about, you know, the onboard drugs, making sure they're safe, they're going to be coming out and inspecting. Then we'll go through the inspection process with the county. Their, and the EHS, that'll be Pat from the county, O'Connell comes out, inspects that unit, but all the equipment's in place, the vehicles are in place, the staff's not quite in place, but that's the biggest hurdle, right? It's probably the biggest hurdle for everybody that's in this business. But we're trying to, we're trying to get the best paramedics. That's instant, you know, credibility growth in the organization, so we're just trying to get the right folks and the right fit. I wanted to ensure you that we're good partners. I've had a good work relationship with this borough for a long time, my previous position in the city, and now next door, I'm on the other side, so. But I'm here to answer any questions you may have, just, I might be able to get a couple questions out of the way. I think Chief Montella gave you kind of where we were. I mean, doing a fire-based delivery EMS service, I believe, is the best service. It's the best service for me, the fire chief, the police chief, because when we go to bed, you know, we go to bed at night, we know where the medic is, right? We know where our squad is. We wake up in the morning, we know where our squad is. Something happens at an event, you folks are there, we got it, right? Somebody will be here in a second. So I do believe that's the best delivery. And that's what we're looking to do. The billing piece, we look to do something quarterly. We haven't really put that together. We look forward to sending something, Rocky Run EMS. Our fire department and our EMS department is similar to probably the setup you guys have here. We pass through and we pass those funds over and they make things happen, right? It's similar here, and Rocky Run will, you know, it's nothing that the chief's not used to with the, with different sharing each other's billing. So we would send, they would send a bill, Rocky Run EMS, and then, I, nothing on the books until twenty-six. There's already been a commitment, as you guys know, with the vehicle, and you know, these guys, these guys have been great, so we need to take all that into account. We look forward to getting their leadership with, and EMS leadership with their, with your chief and Chief Dave Montella, who anchors EMS to make sure we get all those things worked out, make sure all those, the money that's already been brought forward and, you know, skin in the game is taken into account for. I think that was the big one, we, how we would pay it. We want to keep this as much as cost neutral, right? That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to, we're not like the other folks, right? We're not looking to make money here. We need to keep this cost neutral for the departments, and it's, the ALS piece is just what we need. So we get down there. What's key, I think, with us working together is the BLS setup, you guys already have, BLS setup, we already have, we have two transporting units, and Aston Township with two transporting units. Regional approach works. We had, had some conversations with the other side, and hopefully they, those guys will get on board too, but I think this is the best delivery for us and our residents. So my parents live here in Brookhaven, so we want to make sure that we get there promptly.
I have a quick question. It sounds like you guys, I don't know if you called an interview process for the paramedics, you already had to kind of, and then, now when you decide on the right paramedics to use, are they our paramedics or they shared with other communities?
Well, they would be shared. So the ALS chase car would be a paramedic in a vehicle which would go to the same call with the BLS animal. So you'd have Brookhaven's ambulance, the ALS chase car. Those staff and personnel would actually work for Rocky Run, we would put them through a vetting process, backgrounds, and all those kind of things. And then we would, the BLS does the billing piece.
Counsel, I'm trying to tell you that when our ambulance answers a call, chief's ALS car comes in Brookhaven, we bill for their car too. The money portion of the ALS will get sent to them. When their ambulance goes and the car goes in their town, the ALS portion will go into that bucket, right? And that's the cost that yearly can go up and down. So based on that, we keep throwing the good money back at it, right? The money that's recovered keeps going back into the program, into the car. So that's where we're at as far as that goes. It's a reimbursement backdoor.
So the process is pretty much the same from when we were utilizing closure?
Exactly.
It was the same exact process where we have a chase car, that chase car is now just being provided by Rocky Run and Middletown, but our BLS and everything else stays the same. So that model stays the same, it's just right now the billing aspect and getting it up and running, and obviously now it's just going to cost us a little bit more because of starting it up. I do agree that this is the best approach because we've been working on this for quite some time.
We've been to the meetings.
We've been to the meetings and stuff like that. We've all been to those meetings, so I think that this is the best approach. I guess my one question would be, I know that we've been talking about you getting the ALS, like what, how much longer is that process going to be for you to be recertified?
I can't really answer that tonight. We had originally like targeted September, but I really don't think we'll be, there is, you know, they did say that things would be expedited, right? Things would be expedited in Delaware County because of the situation.
Yeah.
Still, there's the whole paperwork thing, the state, DEA, that was a little federal, so I mean, we don't have that back, we do need to get that. And then the big thing is, is like, when you turn on, I think a lot of people have to understand is when, when we turn it on, well, you need to be in service, right? We can't put that, we can't have staffing issues, right, right off the go, because you know, that, that's not what we're looking to do. I'm sure that's not what he did when he put his ambulance in service.
What is the timeline, Chief, is when do you expect to have a proposed contract or agreement that our council can do and my eyes can peruse?
Hundred percent. Well, so we have a, the ALS reimbursement agreement already with the fire. Okay, so that billing agreement, we have with our neighbors and our other fire, other ambulance companies, that's in place, but as for the, for the borough, that was what I was looking forward to getting with those guys, so they can get you something on paper, all the costs, nothing à la carte, you know what I mean? Like here it is, right? And I think we, I think we're at a place where we're comfortable trying to keep the cost down, right? Again, we're trying to keep it cost neutral. Someone else decides they want to be part of it, then we can go back and we can sit down and we can reevaluate, and then those costs may come.
Being as transparent as possible without any hidden costs.
Hundred percent.
And no surprises, that is generally the best policy, right?
Right.
And we did give you a, you got a number, the basic number, right? So where we're at now, chief said it would probably be built on a quarterly versus a monthly. You guys saw the last contract on Riddle, it was a monthly contract, thirty-one thousand some dollars a month. So that probably works better for you guys still, I would say quarterly, you know what I mean? It's not, it wouldn't be like the first of January, I need a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars.
Exactly.
So for as early as next month, we will begin preliminary or early of our budget. I got that for you ready. Twenty-six. And we want to know the dollars and the cents. I mean, you guys have all seen the dollars and cents of what we've had so far, right? I mean, we've been dealing with it, people changing numbers, people backdooring people, people.
There's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on.
Rather than.
Yeah.
But I want you guys to know.
A lot of moving pieces behind the scenes.
One hundred percent transparency with us working together, that.
With our budget, we don't work with a lot of fluff, so we need our numbers, we need good numbers.
And you don't need to.
So their fire department, our fire department, like I said, we kind of do this, we really look to do this a regional approach in the beginning, myself, chief, my brother, we want to do a regional thing, we're all, fire department base, EMS is where it's at. When you have third-party people come in, it gets messy.
Mm-hmm.
Trust me, because they can just walk away and say, hey, we made enough money here. But we can't go all wet, right? We're committed to the borough, the people, the residents, fire department base is the answer. So all our alarm cards, our ambulances, our fire trucks, they're all the same way. We all back each other up, Brookhaven, Middletown, Aston, Rocky Run. We just do the whole thing. We have two ambulances up, Aston has two ambulances up, Rocky Run has two ambulances up. If we're tied up, one of these threes come into your house and we all have the billing agreement, so we don't blast your socks out, like somebody else can send you a bill to take you to hospital for eight thousand dollars, where you're going to get a regular bill from us.
Subscription, that's the other thing, our subscription's already, I believe Aston's already on board with that, but Brookhaven, Middletown, and Aston, like we honor each other's subscriptions. So if they take it, they take an ambulance call in Middletown Township, you know, our residents, if there is a subscription, you know, they take, they honor that, we do the same here when we come down to Brookhaven.
That's not an easy thing to get accomplished either.
No, it's not.
Just so you know, that's very territorial back in the days, so.
We appreciate everything you two have been doing. I mean, it's life safety, so we appreciate it.
It's life safety, you know, it's not, we can't put a chase car up on the street, it's not free.
No.
You know, it's not free. And like I said, off the cuff, today we saved a life, okay? Our crew saved the life today of our residents.
That's what matters.
Yes, that's what matters, right?
Absolutely.
So can't put, yeah, there's dollar figures for this, but this is the best thing that we came up, where you guys have a great interest, the residents have a great interest, and the fire companies have a great interest, right? We want best for all, everybody here, everybody here, you know? That third-party stuff scares the crap out of me, so.
It should.
Is there a buy-in for possibly another township if they fail with their service? There could be more, well, I don't know. There could be more people getting involved, but I think there could be, which would really benefit all of us.
I think there's a lot of moving parts, being a part of the meetings in the county, they don't even know at this point, we don't know what that will look like either, George, because we have four major hospitals in Delaware County that are closed, you know what I mean? So we won't even know what the impact of closure closing, impact that it has on Riddle, I mean, the police department and the fire department with the ambulances, they see it every day. So those people that aren't living it every solitary day don't understand that whole concept. So I feel that the way that it handled, was handled, there was a few organizations, a few boroughs and townships that were kind of strong-armed to do things and make decisions that were in the best interest of their folks at that time. We were lucky enough to have great partners already in place, but we were also able to have a little bit of time to kind of work through some of those hiccups, to say the least. So I feel that there will probably be a few other people, but.
That's what I suspect.
But they, but we won't know that, and it's not anything negative about this third-party, but I agree with both of the chiefs, this regional approach probably is the best approach for our folks and for our surrounding communities.
I think it takes time, right?
It does, absolutely.
Takes time, it's tough to get, you got to start small, I feel like, you know, you got to get a couple municipalities that are, that are close together to get, get this thing up and moving, and it takes a lot of hard work, right, for folks to put this together. But I think, I think people are going to take notice, and I think, you know, it's best for our residents and yours.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Another question.
Sure.
Oh, here, behind him. You touched on the subscription, so going forward, the subscription model will still identify.
identify those.
It'll still be Brookhaven. You'll still see the EMS subscription come out, but that will protect you in Brookhaven, Middletown, Aston, all of those barriers coming in, all these different.
And you'll still, you'll build, if you're facing charges, you'll still build?
Yes, we legally have to build. It's the law that says we have to build. But what happens is your insurance will pay us a certain amount of money. If you're an ambulance subscriber, that's all we get. Say the bills, let's just pick a number, fourteen hundred dollars. Your insurance basis, three hundred. You're off the hook for it now. It's the best insurance policy you could ever invest in, I think.
Yeah.
So you're done. You don't owe any more money to us. You're obligated. That's it. We built you. We got what we got. And that's it.
Yeah, I'm surprised my mother had an ambulance call. She lives in Rattletown. They, they don't have to.
Yeah. So she probably got the full line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? She got the full line.
And she had to pay it all back.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so, you know, and then it, you know, if you don't have that type of thing, sometimes they'll, you know, they send you, you know, collections and all that. It gets crazy. So this is the best thing that works for our town, our people, our surrounding towns that we work with. We're all on the same page. So the other fire chief, Aston's fire chief, we're all on the same page. So that's what seems to work and give the best protection to the people.
Question. I see these micro hospitals are going to be opened up in next door in Aston, in Springfield, perhaps some other locations. That's generally a good thing?
That'll generally take people we take to the hospitals like out of Riddle now, that'll be in place to take people with less serious injuries and stuff.
They're not trauma center, obviously, it's not.
It's somewhere local that we can actually, your family member won't be transported. Let's say we go to Christiana now, Mike and all. We're all over the place. Paoli, we're in Wilmington a lot with our ambulances. It's crazy where we go anymore. But that'll give us a place.
Distance-wise, it's been short, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Chief, what about the trauma patients?
Traumas?
Where they go to Camden, where they go?
Traumas.
No, they don't like it all.
They're going to Paoli, they're going to Christiana. We just had a, the other night at our chief's meeting, Cooper actually came there, gave us some time to go into Penn Presty in Philly. So that's different types of options we have. I mean, if you're a cardiac arrest, you're going to go to rural hospital, right? So they have to take you. You don't have a choice, right?
Yeah.
But that's, that's what's out there anymore, right? I mean, we got the option helicopters and all that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's tough not having that hospital down the street anymore. It's tough.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Chief, thanks, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Get that out of the way there. That was good stuff. So we'll give you our fire report for July twenty-twenty-five. We have one fire incident, sixteen non-fire, twenty-one mutual aid, five drills, forty-three calls for the month, three hundred and eighty-one for the year. We had no loss on structure or contents for the month. We did have one civilian injury. Our calls were forty-three calls, averaged eight firefighters per call, two hundred and one hours in service, two thousand four hundred and fifty-four hours for the year. By training sessions, averaged eighteen firefighters, a hundred and fifty-eight hours of training, sixteen hundred and forty-three for the year. Fire company responded to motor vehicle accidents, one at one sixty-four Meadow Brook Lane with a vehicle overturned, three fifty-two in Hilltop Drive. We had an accident, a fuel spill in the garage on John Drive, and one cardiac arrest. We assisted Chester Township on one building fire at four thousand five Borlow Road, assisted Middletown Fire Company's Rocky Run in Middletown on three building fires, one twenty-four Glen Middle Road, three forty North Middletown Road, and ten eighty-three Baltimore Pike. Assisted Newtown Square, covering up for their station while they were on a second alarm building fire in Chester now. Assisted Parkside Fire Company building fire twenty-three Elbon Road. Our fire training for the month was water supply. We did have water rescue training and we had engine company operations. We also invite everybody to come out tomorrow night to the Borough's National Night Out and come out and support our local fire, police, and EMS and meet your hometown heroes. It's a great event for your whole family to attend. We'll be there from six to eight tomorrow night. We did attend the Show of Hope for, in support of the Hope for Haley Cause and Foundation. We were at that. We attend, Brookhaven Fire Company on seven twenty-three twenty-five had two life saves on the same day. Our ambulance crew had a save of a resident in the borough with a severe CBA, which that's a stroke. Medical Command Staff for Paoli Hospital, all our station, told our crew that they saved that woman's life that day. We had a resident in cardiac arrest in the borough as well, police, fire, and EMS, and actually some civilians' neighbors were involved. This resident's life was actually saved that day as too. That was a good day for the fire company. We did save a life today as well. It did Freakside. Fire, police, and EMS were all involved in that as well. We just performed the chase car updates and there is going to be a pipeline drill in the borough sometime in September. We're really not going to put, I don't want to put it out in public media, who's having the drill because they're mandated to have it. It's pretty quiet, but there's going to be a major pipeline drill in the borough, Brookhaven in September. I guess if it's close, probably get notified. But it's, it's, it's testing their capabilities and all that and responses. So it's a big event. The borough's involved, Farinelli, and all the pipeline people.
Not still on Family Day.
Clean-up people. No, we won't do it on Family Day. I promise. All right. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. I, there's more details, but I really don't want to let the cat have it by, because there's some people that got to be prepped for that. Our EMS report for July twenty-twenty-five, we had two hundred and twenty-one ambulance calls, transported a hundred and forty-seven people to the hospital, ninety-eight calls in Brookhaven Borough, a hundred and twenty-three assist calls, one hundred and forty-six were dispatched as ALS emergencies, seventy-five as BLS, and our year-to-date total is one thousand nine hundred and fifty ambulance calls. And that concludes my report. Thanks.
Good work, chief.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Police Chief Havish.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, folks.
Your summer's going great. All right. For the month of July twenty-twenty-five, the officers of the police department initiated or were assigned a total of six hundred and seventy-seven calls for service. Total of five criminal cases and five non-traffic. Summary criminal cases were filed with the district report during the month. We did take reports for thirteen, I'm sorry, sixteen thefts, three frauds, three disorderly conducts, handled twenty-six domestics or other disputes. We assisted other police departments forty-eight times, had seventeen alarms, thirty motor vehicle crashes, a hundred and eighty-four business checks were performed during the month. There were eleven adult arrests, four juvenile arrests, forty-two citations were issued, fifty parking violations, I'm sorry, about fifty, twenty parking violations. Probably between the fire department and police department combined, it was about fifty. And fifty-seven traffic warnings. We drove three thousand one hundred and thirty-five miles on patrol during the month. I just want to note on the fire lane thing, so a couple years ago, the borough, I think rightly upgraded the fine for the fire lane violation to fifty dollars. So it's a sizable violation when you park in the fire lane. And the chief can attest, giving out these tickets. People aren't always happy. It's like, it shouldn't be that big of a deal. People get really mad. And amazingly, despite constantly issuing tickets, it's like, there's just new people that are willing to park in the fire lane because they're lazy or whatever the case may be. You know, and we, if they fail to respond to these citations, they're mailed a state vehicle code citation. So it goes from a fifty-dollar fine to like a hundred and forty-some dollar fine. And then they can either pay that or they'll come to court oftentimes, and then we make them pay the original fifty-dollar fine. I mean, there's some revenue being generated by the borough for that. But again, it's like, I, I mean, we could have somebody doing fire lane enforcement all day, every day. It wouldn't stop. And there's still, some people are just beyond help, unfortunately, and they're just lazy. But, you know, we are, we are doing that. And the, the public fire safety guys are issuing tickets a lot. And again, we're, we're doing that. And also the handicap parking enforcement, you know, and Fire Marshal Leslie's issuing the, the fire lane tickets as well. But it's, it's a never-ending thing, unfortunately. So I do want to point out, so we've had an intern this summer. I talked a couple months ago, Kayla Callen. She's a, a rising senior at West Chester University. She's finishing up her practical hours with us in the next couple weeks. She'll be going, heading back to school at the end of August. I just want to thank her for all the hard work this summer. She was really a huge resource to us and helped out, kind of knock out some projects that we had hanging for a while. And having her here, it was a real pleasure showing her, you know, the different ins and outs of police work from not only the administrative side and, but also she was doing ride-alongs with some of the men, you know, and seeing police work. She worked with Detective Wetton and was doing some criminal investigation stuff and got to experience things that, you know, I think most college students, especially in the criminal justice field, didn't, didn't get to do. So we're going to miss her when she's gone, but obviously we wish her the best of luck with her senior year at West Chester University. We did complete some upgrades with, at the police department, our remote intercom system, our video intercom at all the doors was pretty dated. So we upgraded it with a new, modern version. The best we could tell, what we took out, it was original construction of this building back in ninety-five. In fact, one of the pieces we pulled out had a manufacturer date of November of nineteen ninety-four on it. It was still working. I mean, not completely. The screen was broken and didn't work, but you could still kind of hear what people were saying. But it was fine from a security and safety standpoint to get that thing out of there. So we did upgrade, I'd say we definitely got our money's worth with whatever we bought the first time. That's for sure. So we also upgraded some access control with the police garage. We added a camera in there. We added key fob access so we can more accurately track who's going in and out of there, when the door's open. We'll get an alert if it's left open, which is really helpful because it's kind of tucked away from the building. So having all that, you know, the modern upgrades, obviously doing these things helps us maintain, you know, accreditation standards and be able to say that, you know, we got, we're taking care of our security and safety within the building and our outbuildings where our equipment and, you know, sometimes vehicles may be stored if they're part of investigative process. The department's been working through to sell some forfeited and abandoned property and evidence through municipal over the summer. That was one of the things Kayla was working with us on. Couple months ago, Council of Owe, we sold a truck on there. It was an old seized truck that we got through the criminal forfeiture process. We got like fifteen hundred bucks for that. Dave was happy to get that thing out of the, the, the borough garage. But, so the things we sold, it was all kinds of random stuff, old evidence, different things like that, some old equipment, old light bars and things. We generated this month over a thousand dollars, just stuff that was sitting around collecting, selling it all municipal, which was kind of nice. And then I just wanted to point out that Detective Wetton, through the partnership with the Central Doca SWAT team, he participated in one call-out during the month in the city of Chester for warrant service with them. So like Chief Montal pointed out, tomorrow night is our National Night Out event, from six to eight P.M. here at the Borough Hall. It's going to be a lot of fun. We got a DJ come in, we got Mr. Softy, bring Mr. Softy, that's a sales pitch and nothing else, right? You know, we're going to have some food. We got all kinds of vendors coming. Parkside Police Department's going to be participating with us. We're going to have some cake as well. Yeah, for those that like the sweets, ice cream and cake, the combination. We're looking like we're going to have a lot better weather than we did last year, which is going to be great. So like I said, Parkside Police is going to be participating with us, along with the fire department, the EMS. We got the county hazmat team coming out with their big truck to show off some of the stuff they got. So definitely come on out and check it out. We're looking like it's going to be a really great time. And again, we're looking forward to, you know, bigger and better things each year. This, this is a really exciting thing. I think we're also going to plan on doing a, a demonstration of the police drone that we have and getting some cool video of the event as well. We also attended the Show for Hope on July twentieth at Covert. Obviously, you know, we're all familiar with Hope for Haley Foundation. The Show for Hope was amazing, as per usual. It was, the sun came out and it really baked us when we were out there. It was, it was a really, really great time. It was amazing to see all the people. There were some amazing cars. It was just, it was really great interacting with everybody and knowing what a great cause it was going for as well, which was nice. It was easy to spend money on, you know, the fifty-fifty and the raffle baskets when we're there as well. We do, we did sell a bunch of our special edition Hope for Haley Brookhaven Police challenge coins at the event. We do still have some left that we're going to have available at the Hope for, I'm sorry, National Night Out tomorrow night. We are selling the coins for fifteen dollars each. All the proceeds benefit the Hope for Haley Foundation, and they are also available at headquarters during business hours as well. And then finally, just for training for the month, summertime, between vacations and everybody else, wasn't, wasn't much training going on, but we did, Officer Barth and Pasley completed range qualifications for the patrol rifle and handgun under the direction of Detective Wetton during the month. And that's all I got.
Thank you, chief. Adam Mayer?
I have no report.
Mr. Wills?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We had a copy of this. Mr.'s report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would care to peruse it. In somewhat of an aberration this evening, I have no action items for council's consideration. If you have a few salient points though that I would bring up. Number one concerns the Our Lady of Charity former convent building. The borough had recently received a Pendelco School District Property Tax Bill assessing taxes due on the former OLC convent building. In light of St. Joseph's family hope center recent departure from that building, I petitioned the Delaware County Board of Assessments advising that the building will now be exclusively used for public purposes and requested that the entire OLC parcel be classified as tax exempt. I am pleased to advise that the Board of Assessments has granted our petition for tax exempt status for the former convent building and the entire OLC property complex. Number two, right to know law request. Again, my office continues to work diligently with the Borough's Open Records Officer in gathering all responsive records and providing legal responses to our multiple right to know law requests. And again, we continue to process those in a timely fashion. Number three, Delaware County Tax Claim Bureau upset tax sale. This is an annual sale of tax delinquent properties and is scheduled to take place at the Delaware County Courthouse on September the eighteenth. There are thirteen borough properties that are subject to tax sale that also have outstanding municipal trash and sewer feelings assessed against the property totaling more than forty-six thousand dollars, which includes interest, penalties, costs, and attorney's fees. My office has notified Tax Claim Bureau of the identity of these properties and the amount of such municipal means affecting each property so that they may be recovered as part of the proceeds of the tax sale should these properties be sold thereat. Four, property two thirty-five Morris Avenue. This property had multiple outstanding municipal sewer trash feelings. I am pleased to advise that we are able to recover the amount of three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars as full satisfaction of those particular means. Now with that, Mr. Vice President, I can report general progress.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Wills. Mr. Gata.
Thank you, Mr. Patis. Copy of my report is on file with the Borough. If anybody, most of the important items are covered under action items. All the important items covered in the action items. So the first action item is the motion for the Coburn and Chandler ADA curb cuts to accept a proposal from Premier Concrete Incorporated in amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. We received three proposals for this, premier being the low. Cipollone was at twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents, and more construction was at twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Looking for council approval for that award to Premier Concrete.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
A moment for the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
There's a sinkhole that developed in front of 3424 Commerce Avenue. It was checked out by the Public Works Department. I'm going to authorize the repair of a street lateral.
Motion.
Costs is under ten thousand dollars.
Who took the first?
I took the second.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then at 115 East Garrison, the Public Works Department reported a partially collapsed storm drain, and they asked for authorization to repair that.
Same thing?
Same thing, yes, and it'll be under our existing contract we have with ADU Services.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Manhove Rehabilitation Project, need to consider award to Swerve Incorporated in the amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. This is part of the DEP mandate that we address some excess wet weather flows in the sewage treatment plant area. Received one other proposal from ADU Services for twenty-one thousand six hundred. The third contractor denied bidding, they were too busy to provide us the price we seek. We solicited three proposals and then can recommend award to Swerve Incorporated in a little bit amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Catan. All right, this was Mr. Heller's report. Mr. Heller wants to reflect, excuse me, on the brief encounter that, on Cooper Drive that occurred. Print is so small, so give me a minute here.
I'll read it.
I can barely see this. No, I'm going to be, I guess. There was a meeting with Mr. Catan, Mr. Heller, myself, Dave Evans from Public Works, and two PICO employees. Am I right, Mr. Catan? Three? Yeah, okay. That was on Thursday, July 31st, and it was in reference to the power outages that were occurring basically on Cooper, but up in the same area of Cambridge there. They reached out to... Mr. Leslie, who was the, oh, Michelle Garrity?
Mrs. Garrity.
Yeah, they reached out to Michelle Garrity in reference to this thing. And like Charles said, there's going to be a meeting set up, am I right, Charles? Am I reading that, on Thursday the 14th?
They already had it.
They had, oh, I'm sorry, the 14th, yes. For the ongoing issues. So something's working about up in that area. And then Mr. Catan, you know, I mean, also explained, you know, some of the other things, with the exception of that transmission line. So something is occurring up there in the Cooper Marshall slash Cambridge area. Okay, Mr. Heller also has two motions to approve the July 7, 2025 council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the second motion is to advertise the position of code enforcement.
All motion.
Who had the second?
I'll go second.
Who had the first? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And that concludes Mr. Heller's report. Mrs. Sawicki?
We do have some bills that need to be paid, so I'm going to read them through for August 4, 2025, general fund, two hundred and two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars eighty-seven cents. Road Fund is three hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Sewer Fund is eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents. Total payments, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. So we do need a motion for that.
Who has the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the other thing I did have, we just got in the mail today, the financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation budget for 2026, made copies for everybody, so this will be on the September agenda. We have to approve it in September so that these, the numbers that are put on, the budget, have to conform to this, and this form goes to Harrisburg.
This is for the police pension plan?
Mm-hmm.
Motion on this, don't they?
So we don't have to do anything?
So we just need to review this?
We're just, we're just showing you because we got it in today's mail, and we want you to look through it, so we will bring it up in September, but we wanted to make sure you were aware that it's coming up, okay? That's why I brought it, because we got it in the mail today, so. So that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Foliya?
I want to remind everyone about the Business Revitalization Committee. We currently don't have any additional meetings scheduled, but if anyone is interested in joining the committee or restarting meetings, please let me know, or Councilman Duplikie as well. The next Sustainability Committee meeting will be held on August 12 at 7 p.m. And we just want to let everyone know to save the date on your calendars. Our next committee-hosted talk will be held on October 26 at 1 p.m. in the Community Room, and it's free and open to all. Our committee member, Kat Vicente, will be giving a talk on soil, she's a soil expert, called "A Universe Beneath Our Feet," which will be extremely interesting about a very misunderstood resource, which is soil, and how important it is to supporting the ecosystem around us.
Is that, do you have to register for that, or you just show up?
Just show up.
Okay. We'll make sure it gets in the newsletter.
Yeah. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Heller?
Thank you. I have a few items here, nothing, any actionable items, just a few notes. So I want to thank John and Harry for working with the American Red Cross that hosted our blood drive here on the 10th. My understanding it was a huge success, so thank you, John and Harry, for coordinating with the American Red Cross, and we look forward to the next one because, again, it's something that's amazing and helps life safety stuff. I'm just going to touch on a little bit more about the Hope for Haley, the Show for Hope Car Show. We had over three hundred cars that participated. I want to thank the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works Department, the Rec Board, the School Board, as well as the School District, as well as our office staff, because it is, along with the Hope for Haley, a major, amazing event. Again, it helps with breaking the stigma of mental health and suicide awareness. For those that are old enough to remember, they had a keynote singer who was Lauren Hart. It was a surprise, it was great. And so she is already on board for next year, so we look forward to that as well. So it was great seeing that we had over three hundred cars that participated. All that money went back to the Hope for Haley. So I thank the Fire Department again for the flag. That arch is always breathtaking when you see it, it's amazing. So thank you for always participating and doing that, and I know that Christine and the Jacksons are very, very thankful for that. We had, the Technology Committee met on July 24th and the 29th of July. We worked with our alert notifications with making specific groups. We also updated the emergency management page on the website, so please get yourself familiar with all these flash floods that we've been having. We've also been working on the newsletter a lot. I want to thank Steve Schultz for helping with the website for the emergency management. A lot of that information was provided by him. So again, if you get a chance, to please go out and get on our website and utilize that as much as possible. And if you're not getting any of the alerts, which are key, especially since we've had these flash floods, they're getting just more and more violently, more violent, we do send out notifications just to keep an eye out for that stuff. Unfortunately, our concert in the park this July 19th had to be rescheduled because of one of those floods. That one has been rescheduled. Actually, that one's not going to be rescheduled until October. It's either going to be the 11th or the 18th, we're just waiting for confirmation from the organizer. The June meeting, concert that was canceled because of weather, that one's going to be held on August 23rd, and that's Basic Cable at Eaton Park, starting at seven o'clock. The Prairie Committee did not meet this month, but we will be meeting on the 13th at 7 p.m., so please come out and volunteer if you have the time. Arful Aging met on Sunday the 27th. The group made a lot of aprons, which were cute and adorable. I loved watching them make them. There will be no Arful Aging for the month of August, and we will reconvene in September. We had Family Day on the 31st, as well as Rec Board. Family Day, Tom, I think you can attest that is going very well. I think it's actually coming along very nicely, no surprises. The shirts and the logo is amazing. We thank Christine Vasquez for doing the logo. The next Family Day meeting is going to be on 8/28. There will be no Rec Board meeting in August, we kind of take a little bit of a break for that. The Books on Blankets start up in August, it's the Wednesday, every Wednesday at 10:30 a.m. in Easton Park, Eaton Park, and it, for the age groups from infants to kindergarten, that is a registered event, so you need to go on Milltown Library and participate with Just a few happy birthdays that are coming up. We have Officer Connor, we have office staff Natalie Pino, we have Chief Havick, we have Chief Montella's birthday, and we also have our Residential Inspector Sean Guthrie. And just a final thank you again to our Fire Department, Police Department, our Emergency Management Coordinator for always going out and doing above and beyond during these weather-related incidences. It's not fun when you have to go out there in those flash floods and stuff like that, so I appreciate, the whole council does, and the mayor appreciates everything that you guys do, so thank you so much. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. My report is very simple. I attended a workplace safety meeting hosted by Mr. Willard. The big topic was heat exhaustion, obviously, through the summer months here. Presented to our Public Works, part of our Fire Department, and also the Police Department. Always happy to hear that there was no injuries and no Borough-owned vehicles were involved in any accidents. And that's the end of my report. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Ordinance Committee did not meet in July or in June. Members were using that time to review the language of older ordinances to see if any needed updating. The next Ordinance Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, August 21 at 6:30 p.m. All are welcome. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Duplikie?
Good evening, everyone. Quick start, I don't have any action items myself either, but a quick reminder, it'll be here before we know it, November 15th is going to be our electronic and paper shredding recycle event at Coburn Elementary, so please keep note of that date, and if you have any kind of recycling to do with that purpose.
Is it nine o'clock?
Nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve.
Yes. But I'll send, I'll be, you know, at all future council meetings up to it, I will send a reminder. On to Public Works, I got a list of completed tasks over the last month or so, so I'm going to just quick read off what Public Works has done recently. They installed cabinets and painted these cabinets at Memorial Park, Eaton Park, and at the police station. The dead trees on Borough property at Grant Drive and Jackson Drive and Cambridge Road have been removed. The crew installed the fence between Fields 3 and 4 at Memorial Park. Security camera installation has started at the Our Lady of Charity property. Third quarter chipping was completed with seventy-two total appointments. Year-to-date appointments is one hundred and sixty-five, so they're, you know, you guys are keeping the guys busy with this chipping, thank you. And sewer cleaning is always ongoing through the Borough. Upcoming projects over the next month or so, construction of sheds in the gazebo for the parks, installation of playground mulch around the fall zones in Sampson Park, installation of a drainage line at Eaton Park, begin repairing Follow Hero banners, this is an important one, and a lot of people like to see these banners being replaced and fixed. So they're going to begin repairing the Follow Hero banners. The main issue is acquiring the replacement hardware that we have to purchase to rehang them. Continuing regular grass cutting around the Borough and the parks, and filling potholes as they are reported. So if you see a pothole, call the Borough, make the report, and then Public Works will make sure they get to try to take care of it as soon as possible. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Duplikie. Our Marshal, Leslie.
Good evening, council, good evening, residents. Just a couple things going on here. I received a phone call for some hoarding conditions in Triple Run. Got ahold of Chief Montella, we have it in our CAD system now, we know the address, God forbid something ever breaks out there, we know not to go there, or go into that property. That's in our CAD system. Wawa and Burger King, they had a lightning strike up on the avenue, they were out powered for about forty hours, they brought a temporary generator in, it ended up being the two transformer pods, the ones that sit behind the Burger King and the one that sits behind the Wawa. I think they got that up running around midnight this past Friday night, but they were down for about forty hours. I'm not the health inspector, but I was there anyway. Wawa threw everything out, Wawa's good like that, they brought a forty-yard cannon, got rid of everything. Burger King, they locked their freezer, I'm not the guy, but the temperature was still up to, or low enough to retain everything. I just, I just checked on everything, that's just what I do. I'm not certified in that, but I still go anyway, take a look, just for our own Borough residents. Again, they talked about the pipeline drill that's coming up. Jiffy Lube at the 4515 Edgeline Avenue is going to be changed in hand, that's going to be a Bobalene Lube Express or something. And over 280 Bridgewater Road, Triple Run, there we had a hydrant leaking over there, we got that replaced, and we brought that up, up out of the ground a little bit, so that's up to grade. And again, with the parking signage throughout the four big shopping centers, I've been working with Bobby Barth, the Haven Police Officer, he brought it to my attention, some of the signs were faded. The only shopping center we're waiting on now is the Haven Shopping Center, which, that guy down there just moves a little slow, and a couple more signs they're going to put up over at the LA Fitness, no parking. That's the end of my report, council, thank you.
Thank you. Charles, the Jiffy Lube, same type of usage as far as the...
Correct, correct. They have a lot of discrepancies in there, they're going to bring it up to code prior to selling it, Jiffy Lube is going to, and they'll bring it up to code so they can just continue to go, it's going to be a Bobalene Lube Express or something.
Zonic usage.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. That opens up the second public discussion.
I purposely was not going to...
I do.
Tom Dykes, Burke Haven Road. So, just so everybody knows, yes, we have Books on Blankets starting every Wednesday this month, for preschoolers, which can also bring older children along with that, too. We also have two new programs with Milltown Libraries starting this month. One is this Friday at nine o'clock, I think it is? Let's see here, I'll check and make sure. At nine-thirty at the park, and it's preschool yoga. So it should be lots of fun to see that going on, as if they don't do enough yoga by themselves.
That would be cute.
It does need to be registered through Milltown Library, she can only handle fifteen children, so if you want to do that, do that. The second one is for elementary school age yoga, and that's kindergarten through fifth grade, and that is also at nine-thirty, that will be on Thursday, August 21st. So two new programs are then absolutely free to the Borough, you just need to sign up with the library. Can you believe it's, it's a... Can you believe it's, it's the beginning of August? Okay, so Family Day tickets start going, being given out on Monday, August the twenty-fifth, Monday through Friday from nine to four here at the office, and also Monday and Wednesday evenings from six, from six to eight PM in the lobby. So do that. You need to have a ticket to come in so you can make sure you get food for what's going on. For Family Day, lots of fun. So, we have that going on. So Mrs. Heller sent me an email today, there's something that came out to her, she saw, and so I just wanted to address this with all the residents. Mostly for seniors. There was a notice that was sent out to some seniors. It's Delaware County celebrates National Senior Day, it's August the twenty-first at ten o'clock at the Redwood Center. They listed it as Burke Haven, it's actually Upland.
Yes, it is.
Well, no, so if you hear anybody talking about it, tell them it's Upland. However, registration is being done through COSA, not through, not through the park system. So they have to register with COSA, so they can do that. So we'll see what happens with that. Just got confirmation today that we do have our murder mystery scheduled for November the fourteenth. It is a Dickens of a murder. Should be interesting. We have to bring in our top pets for that one, see what's going on. So there's lots of fun things going on. We still need lots of volunteers for Family Day, for all our events, actually, but for Family Day. And one of the big things that I, I'm feeling very, very passionate about this right now is I'm not getting younger, okay? I'm sorry, not happening. I need volunteers to help do Family Day, I need volunteers to help organize Family Day and help to run Family Day. If we don't get volunteers, Family Day may be coming to an end. This is our thirty-eighth Family Day this year, but if we don't start getting volunteers, we're not gonna be able to handle it. I mean, our volun- our average age for our volunteers is, that we have on our regular basis, probably about sixty-four, sixty-five.
Don't look at me, I'm not saying a word.
We're, we're, we're in that older range there, we all know we are. But we need help, we need younger people, not just for, you know, for Family Day, but for everything. Baseball needs volunteers, softball needs volunteers, we're looking for, if they want to try basketball, sorry, we need volunteers.
Fire company needs volunteers.
The fire company needs volunteers, the boy scouts need volunteers, the girl scouts need volunteers. Everybody needs volunteers.
Basketball needs volunteers.
I just said that.
Oh, sorry.
And I realize everybody's life is busy. But it helps and it gives you a good feeling to volunteer for something. The one adage that I always, that I was brought up with, with church that I grew up with, if you want something done, go to the busiest people, 'cause they'll find a way to get it done. Well, you know what, we've got lots of people who are busy, but they're not helping to get it done, so they need to step up and help get things done. All right? So that's, that's my soapbox there for, there.
What day is Family Day?
Family Day is September the twenty-seventh, twelve to four, okay? And Mr. Catan, and Mr. Duplikie, and Dave, thank you for putting the drainage pipe at Eaton in, I've been after that for three years. It hopefully will help to keep the park from flooding so much. All right?
All right, I guess I'll submit the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.